All right, I'll call the City Council Special Meeting to order Thursday, October 6th at 6:00 PM. Ask the Clerk to take roll call, please.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Here.
Councilmember Jennings.
Here.
Councilmember Canes.
Here.
Councilmember Miller.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim, you have a call.
All right, I'm going to invite everybody to stand for the Fledge of Allegiance. The Fledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, since Kelly is on her way, I think we don't need to do a motion to excuse her. Yeah, we'll do it later if she doesn't show. So, come to the agenda, any modifications to the agenda? Take a motion?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Support.
Is the motion seconded? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Councilmember Canes.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Next, we'll open it up to public comment for items on the agenda. And given we have nobody in the audience, we'll go ahead and close the public comment and move into the actual requests. And the first and only item that we have on the agenda for consideration is an update on the city administrator search. We have Joyce Parker from the MML here to give us an update, so I will turn it over to you, Joyce.
Okay, thank you. We advertised the city administrator position and received 10 resumes for the position. Of the 10 resumes, there were two that are outside of Michigan. Each one of the resumes were evaluated based on the criteria that was established by the mayor and members of the city council. Interviews took place in order to get additional information related to each one of the candidates. Based on the interviews and the criteria, in the report that we have tonight, there's a summary, first of all, related to each one of the candidates. Based on having a bachelor's degree, the master's degree was desired but was not required for the position. The candidates were also evaluated on their experience and the requirement that the city had is related to five years of experience in local government management or in a senior manager position. Community and economic development was another requirement, budget and finance, human resources, labor relations, public works, and intergovernmental relations. And so, as I interview the candidates, I ask questions related to these specific areas. The other thing that I tried to focus on because of comments made by the council is related to budget and finance, to really get a sense of their experience in that area. And at least two of the three that are being recommended have a lengthy experience in budget and finance. One of the candidates have experience but not to the extent that the other two have. So, I just wanted to bring that to your attention. So, for example, with candidate number one, the candidate has a bachelor's degree in business administration, a master's degree, and a master of science degree, five years' experience. This candidate has 13 years of experience, has experience in community development, budget and finance, HR and labor relations, public works, and intergovernmental relations. And so, that's just an example of, you know, how they were ranked. Any questions related to the summary?
Do you know which, can you tell us which two were out of state, which numbers?
I'll have to look, but I can't.
You don't have to rush.
Okay, just one.
I was just curious.
So, were two of the finalists out of state or just one of them?
Oh, no, the two out-of-state candidates are not recommended.
Right.
Yeah.
So, none of the out-of-staters are?
That's correct. All of the recommended candidates are within Michigan.
Okay.
Number seven is one of them.
Okay.
What was the first one? Number seven in what?
Number seven.
She just said seven. She's not done yet.
Oh, okay.
For out-of-state, correct?
Yes.
And number nine.
Okay.
So, after reviewing all of the resumes and going through the interview process, there were three candidates that appeared to be stronger, that could actually not only meet the requirements but might be a good fit for the community. And so, you know, what I'd like to do is kind of go through their background and experience with you. The other comment I would make, too, is that I received several questions about the turnover related to the manager position. And, you know, I didn't have a lot of detail to share with the candidates, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention because I think it's going to be critical as you move forward, whether it's with this appointment or future appointments.
Were those from the three finalists or just in general from everyone?
Actually, it came up with two of the three finalists.
Thank you.
And what did you share with them about the last one?
Excuse me?
What did you share with them about the last one?
I basically indicated that the last administrator resigned from the position because that was my understanding, but I didn't have a lot of detail to share beyond that.
Have any of these candidates interviewed here before or have been considered here before or have worked here before?
As far as the recommended three, they have not interviewed here before or worked here before. But in terms of the 10 candidates, there's one that applied before but did not interview for the position.
So, these are all three new candidates?
Yes.
And the reason I ask, maybe it's just the way it's worded, but in candidate number six, it says, "An accomplishment the candidate is most proud of is updating the master plan and DDA plan." Is he referring, or she referring to our plan?
No, in their community. In the community where they currently serve.
Oh, maybe a master plan and DDA instead of the. I was reading it as ours.
No, it wasn't yours.
Okay.
Okay. So, with the first candidate, number six, the candidate has a Bachelor of Science degree in Business Administration from Central Michigan University and a Master of Public Administration degree from East Carolina University. The candidate is currently employed as an Assistant City Manager in a community in Michigan with a population of 59,000. The candidate also served as interim city manager after the manager left there for a three-month timeframe. The candidate was previously employed for another city in Michigan with a population of 9,300, as Assistant City Manager, Community Development Director for three and a half years, and as a village manager in a village with a population of 1,500 for two years. The candidate is interested in the position because of professional goals and because the candidate is familiar with the community and has friends in the area. Some of the strengths include community development, planning and zoning, community engagement, and budgeting. The candidate has experience with all facets of budgeting, from developing the budget to the oversight of the budget, and currently has that responsibility. And then, as mentioned earlier, one of the accomplishments is related to updating the master plan and the DDA plan, which had not been updated for 12 years.
Which is interesting because it has to be updated every five years.
Yeah, that's the way it's supposed to be.
There were two updates overdue.
Yeah.
Yeah. How long is this particular candidate in their current position? It's a 59,000 population city.
In the current position for about a year and nine months.
Were they able to speak about how they felt they handled those three months as the city manager?
Well, the individual was very proud of being in that, working in that capacity. And just reviewing the resume, also had that experience, I believe, in another community where he worked.
Okay.
The other.
Did that, oh, sorry.
The other comment that came out of the discussion is that this candidate has been more directly related to the city management track. As far as growth and development, started off as a fellowship recipient through ICMA, and then, I believe strategically took certain positions to gain the experience, but has not served like in a larger community as a manager, but is really working towards doing that.
Do they apply for the position where they are after they have served as interim or no?
No.
Okay.
Was that because it was just a three-month leave of absence when they came back or was?
Well, with the current position, the city hired another city manager to fill that spot, and then the candidate went back to the assistant position.
Talks about community engagement. What does that mean or what does that look like for this particular candidate?
Basically, public meetings, interacting with the community.
Not any kind of outreach programs or anything like that?
That did not come up as an example.
Okay. Do you know what size budget this person managed or is managing?
I'm guessing if, it's a good question, but I'm guessing if they're 59,000, it's probably way bigger than ours.
Though I think they're doing the entire budget.
Yeah.
In one of the positions, the budget was 90 million, but that was in a community where the candidate served as a fellow through the program. That was, yeah, that was in North Carolina.
Says the candidate currently has oversight and control of the budget.
Yes, and actually listed that as a strength.
Right, but what size budget? Or did they not indicate?
Just give me a minute to look real quick.
Sure.
38 million, general fund. And, yeah, the total budget, 118 million.
Okay, thank you.
And just keep in mind, in the community, it's a community of about 60,000.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
The community development piece, did they speak to bring in any businesses into their community or anything like that?
The candidate spoke to the creation of the Downtown Development Authority and the plan related to the authority.
Okay.
Creation or update?
And then, in one of the previous positions, served as the Business Ambassador and the city liaison related to federal, state, and community groups interfacing with the community to develop new programs.
Okay. This might be overstepping, but did you follow up with them about another person being hired for the city manager position?
Well, when I spoke to the individual, the person had indicated that they were not applying, did not apply for the position. I didn't ask why.
Okay.
Definitely something to ask in the interview.
Yeah. Okay, then, the second candidate, number eight, has a Bachelor of Arts degree in Political Science from Western Michigan University, a Master of Public Administration degree from Oakland University, was previously employed in Ohio in a city with a population of 300,000 for 13 months as Director of Economic Inclusion. Before this position, the candidate worked in a charter township in Michigan with a population of 33,000 for one year, an Economic Development Director for a city with a population of 8,400 for one year, and as Business Development Coordinator for a community alliance for two years. The candidate is interested in the position because it would be an advancement. The candidate supervised 12 people in his area of responsibility. The candidate had a department budget but was not responsible for the budget. Some of the strengths include communication, economic development, and the ability to connect with people of different backgrounds. A major accomplishment was receiving an award from Cranes for work done with Michigan Works.
Did he indicate, or he or she indicate what their department budget was?
In the most recent position, 1.2 million.
Thank you.
Their last salary was $139,000. Is that, are they willing to take less than that?
The candidate currently is not working, so I'm thinking that there is interest.
That was my next question, are they currently working?
Yes.
So, this candidate doesn't have any direct city administrator or assistant city administrator experience, right? It's all economic development?
Mostly economic development, senior management experience but not directly related to community as far as being a city manager. That's correct.
Could you define economic inclusion?
Primarily based, well, let me just make sure I get it right for you. So, basically, the background is coordinating operations, teams, and processes to drive business, local government, and customer service success, serving as the primary contact and support for local businesses in developing working relationship with employers, educators, economic developers. So, basically, working directly with the business community in terms of having certain businesses that may not have been as included in the organization, working to further that type of relationship. Now, I kind of compared it to really trying to further like MBE, WBE activity within an organization, minority businesses, women-based businesses.
And did he discuss any successes with this development?
Pardon me?
Where there are successes indicated.
Well, what was included is increasing of the staff from 13, from three to 13, increasing women, SBE, WBE certifications within the first six months. Implemented a citywide disparity study, which determined minority business inclusion goals with the city. Oversight on all contracts and compliance matters. Set and monitored inclusion goals. So, basically, you know, the accomplishments really evolve around inclusion.
Individuals as opposed to full businesses that he brought into the community or she? It's more of developing individuals to move into the community or do these individuals move into the community?
Companies, minority businesses.
That did move in. Yeah, that moved in and?
Well, actually, it's more related to, I think, procurement where, you know, you actually contract with minority businesses, women-based businesses, design and operate programs that would enhance that type of involvement with the city.
Oh, city-related, where the city would reach out and help those businesses.
Yes.
Not necessarily bring the businesses into the city. There's a difference, okay.
Yeah, okay.
Anything else on this candidate? All right, candidate 10.
Okay. Number 10, the candidate has a Bachelor of Public Administration degree from Eastern Michigan University, Master of Business Administration degree from Walsh College, is currently employed in Michigan in a city with a population of 61,000 as Finance Director there for six months. The candidate indicated that the culture and the working conditions are not comparable with expectations and is interested in looking at other positions. The candidate is also employed on a part-time basis as Finance Director for two smaller communities on a limited basis, one for eight years and the other one for five years, and actually conduct most of that work on like Saturdays in one community and stayed at two hours in the other community per week. And also, in the discussion, the candidate stated an interest in continuing with the part-time work off, which is at different times than normal business hours. So, I asked that question. And before the full-time position, the candidate was employed in a city with a population of 67,000 for one year as Finance Director. In terms of strengths, as mentioned before, the candidate has a strong financial background, has done a lot with grant writing and administration and reorganization. As an example, the candidate stated that there was $12 million received in grants from applications that were written in one of the cities where the candidate has been employed.
Did you dig down at all in terms of the statement that the culture and working conditions were not compatible with their expectations?
Yeah, I did, and what was shared with me is that the organization is not, based on the candidate's comments, is not well-managed. In the interview process, he was told that he would have certain responsibilities, but once getting there, it was different than what he was told. But my, that was the impression that I got. It just wasn't a good fit and it wasn't what the candidate expected.
So, Joyce, is he employed now, full-time with the city?
Yes.
And part-time on the weekends doing other finance work?
Yes.
And how long with the city, did it say?
I believe.
Six months.
Yeah, about six months.
And then, do you have anything prior to that?
Prior to that position, in one of the cities, in the city where the candidate works on Saturdays, the candidate. the candidate used to serve as the city administrator there. And the controller for that city.
And they're adamant about keeping these part-time positions, because that's gonna be a problem.
And that's why I asked the question. I think, you know, you could probably ask more questions about it as part of an interview, but I asked the question because I wondered if that was something...
Breaker.
Yeah, that the candidate would be willing to give up.
And would they be willing to give it up?
My impression is that the work that has been done has been done long-term, and so I'm thinking he may not want to. That's my impression, but you have to ask that question.
But you're saying it's basically two hours is what he devotes to this other job?
Yes.
Per week?
Per week.
But the Saturday position too, that's another one. There's two.
Then it's the Saturday work.
Oh, I didn't catch that. Where's that one?
There's the two hours in the one city and then...
Oh, Saturdays in one community and two hours in another. Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that.
Yes.
And that's, he's there all days, or she, all day Saturday?
Well, I'm thinking it's probably all day on Saturday.
Might be a problem.
But, you know, again, I think, you know, if you decide to interview the candidate, you can really kind of discuss it in more detail and see what flexibility there might be. And I think the key there is that it's more like a long-term commitment that has taken place and the candidate is paid well to do it.
Right, but we need somebody that will be around on the weekends and after-hours and that kind of thing.
I understand. I do.
What do we do now? I would like to start again. I don't know what anyone else thinks. I don't see any real strong...
Yeah, I mean, I kind of share that concern a little bit.
Candidates here.
The number six was the one that I would want to interview, but, I mean, my concern with eight and 10 is it just doesn't seem like they have much city administrator experience. And given, you know, our history over the last, you know, five years or...
Yeah, I think number 10 has the experience. To me, I thought the issue was the other positions. But in terms of the experience, I think that experience is there.
So for the, for all three of the candidates, what was, what was the immediacy need for them? So if, you know, Karen suggested if we open it back up again to try to source some more candidates, do we risk losing these candidates?
Well, I guess you wouldn't know until you, like, you re-advertise and they can reapply.
Well, if we re-advertise, couldn't we keep these candidates and just...
We could ask if, you know, if they're interested in being a part of a new pool, yeah. You could do, we could do that.
Or could we interview these candidates and while we open it back up? I don't know what the legality of that is.
I think, you know, I think you could interview them. Maybe, I mean, if there's two of the three that you think might be stronger, you could interview them. And if you find a candidate that you really like of the two, you know, certainly you could look at extending a conditional offer. Or if you decide that none of the two or three really meets your expectation, then you could go out and re-advertise, but I think that might be a cleaner process.
Right, I was gonna say, that sounds like a better way to go.
Yeah, for sure.
And if it's just one that you're interested in, maybe look at interviewing the one.
So... Yeah, no, I'd be interested in interviewing candidate six. I don't know what the rest of you think about that or the other two.
I was 10, but was talking about those weekend, that weekend job.
I'm interested in interviewing them.
What's that?
I'm interested in interviewing them. I'm curious.
All of them, or?
All of them.
I like the grant-writing skills. 12 million isn't very much. Well, but it's there. It's more than we have.
Yeah, and it's a smaller community too. So 12 million is a lot for a small community.
Could we open it up to one as well? I mean, just to see what their, you know...
Open it up to what now?
Candidate number one, because they have yeses all across the board. I'm curious why they weren't included. I mean, I know you said they probably weren't the best fit, but I'm just...
This happened the last time.
What's that, Karen?
I said this happened the last time when we added additional, that she had not recommended. That was who we ended up with. When did this close? When did we close this interview?
The 18th of September.
Okay. And how long was it open? Just August to...
It was August and September, yeah. And it was extended, I think, it took us a little bit longer to get everything wrapped up. So it was more than 30 days. I just think there's a couple of dynamics going on. One, there's not, the pool is not there any longer. There's not a lot of candidates applying for positions. They're staying where they're at in most cases. So, you know, I can't guarantee you're gonna get a really strong pool the next round. And then, secondly, as I had mentioned, even with two of the three, they were asking me questions about what had taken place. And candidates are really doing their homework on that issue.
Well, they should do homework prior to coming here.
I agree.
I mean, the position prior to coming here.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if we open it up, I would like to have a fresh posting. I think most of that is from 2017, 18. I remember thinking, last time we interviewed, that a lot of it was just carryover and it happened again, so I would like to start fresh. That was seven years ago. Things have definitely changed since then. Yeah, and perhaps, you know, advertise it in other places. I know one of the times I tried to click on the link, the link didn't even work. You couldn't get to, you know, any of the things that you were supposed to be able to. Was it only advertised with MML or where else?
No, it was advertised nationally with the International City County Management Association, which is probably the biggest draw for this position because most managers are members of that association. So it was advertised there. It was advertised certainly within the state of Michigan for all managers through the Michigan Municipal Executives. So they received it. The National Forum for Black Public Administrators. It was advertised through social media.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. It was extensively advertised.
Indeed, or anything like that? I don't know.
Well, actually, MML doesn't use indeed because the candidate pool is not there. They used to use it, but the candidates that applied didn't have any background in this area. So they discontinued using it.
The two that were out of state, were they really far away?
I don't think they were eliminated because they were out of state, correct?
That's correct. That's correct.
Oh, I thought that's why you said, because we requested they not be out of state.
No, no, that was, no, it was, we advertised nationally for the position.
Yeah, they just didn't meet the qualifications.
Do we need to change any of the qualifications? We're interviewing for a position of the manager of SACWA and SACRA. And while there were some great people, I was like, oh, you should apply for city manager. But, you know, I don't know that the background fits, so maybe we need to expand what our requirements are, or...
Yeah, and actually, the requirements that you stated for the position is, it's pretty, it's a pretty sound area. Like, you talked about five years' experience, which is pretty reasonable. If you increase the number of years, then you may not get even as many candidates as you have right now. Five is about the average. The other areas that you included are pretty sound. If you're looking for a city administrator or a city manager, you want someone that has experience working for a city.
Yeah, definitely.
But I think you had asked me about candidate number one.
Yes.
Yeah. The candidate was not included because of information that was provided related to the reference check, the media check, and other positions.
Okay. So I do think I maybe tuned out, but when we were talking about the possibility of interviewing these candidates and still leaving it open, is that what we said we could do? Is that possible?
You can certainly, you can interview the candidates, and if you find that there isn't anyone that you're interested in, you know, you could certainly re-advertise. I don't know, I'd have to check with MML to find out whether they will consider advertising and doing the search a third time.
Okay.
Yeah, I would have to check on that.
You mean, we have to take what we get?
Oh, no, you don't have to take it.
No, we just might have to pay for the advertising.
You might have to pay some.
Oh, gotcha. Okay, okay.
Yeah, so, I mean, it sounds like, you know, Jalen, what she was saying a little bit earlier, the clean way to do it is to advertise one or more, I'm sorry, interview one or more of these candidates, and if we're not satisfied, then open it back up.
And then we can talk, just talk about, and I can get with them and find out, you know, what arrangement can be made with the city, because I can't answer that question right now.
You know how long it would take for you to get the answer?
I can probably get back with you in a couple of days.
Okay.
Yeah, it shouldn't take a long time.
I asked because maybe when we get her answer, we can say like, okay, let's just interview the candidates that she provided us and see, one, if we like them, any of them, you know, face-to-face. And then if they give us a good answer to re-market the job opening, then we could just do that as well, if we're not satisfied with...
Right, but I guess my question is, how does that, how does the answer to that question affect us just going ahead and doing the interviews, right? I mean, either way...
I think, well, I think without, as a, as a whole, to see, make sure that if we don't like them, we know, we can, we know what our Plan B is.
Right, but we could, we could interview them, find out what the Plan B and know.
It would be better just to have the answer up front, I think, for me.
Okay.
But candidate two has no responsibility for budget, or candidate eight, sorry. Candidate 10 has these two part-time positions, which isn't gonna work for us.
Candidate eight had 1.2 million budget.
What's that?
They had the department budget of 1.2 million, candidate eight.
Yeah, at one point, but I wrote on here not responsible for budget.
For the city, I think Joyce said wasn't responsible for the city budget, but had a department budget of 1.2.
A department budget, not the city budget.
That's not, that's not the kind of experience we're looking for. And then, the first one, the community engagement is public meetings? Like, that's, I don't know. I just don't see the...
I think you were gonna say something, Joyce.
Well, I was, I was just gonna say too, you know, again, with candidate number eight, there was a question at one point because the candidate actually had applied for another position, not with this search, but another search. And I think a big part of it was maybe just not being that experienced in public positions, but did not disclose when the position was, when the candidate left the position. So that information was not available until they got into the, a pool. So I just wanted to bring that up.
Do we know how long candidate eight was unemployed, or has been unemployed?
The candidate number eight is unemployed.
But do we know for how long? Like, how long since his last job, or her last job?
About five months.
Okay, thank you.
So the question is, how do we proceed?
Oh, I kinda already said what I wanted to do, so...
Yours is what? Because I didn't really...
We want Joyce to give us the answer about if we don't like any of the ones that we interview, can we open it back up for marketing to see who we...
Want to re-advertise.
What the cost is.
After interviewing these three.
He's saying wait for the answer.
It would take her like a couple of days, so, I mean, but...
And so then we have to get back together, a couple of days for her to tell us about the, what the response is, and then we don't get back together until October 16.
Can't that be emailed?
October 16 to do the approval of it.
We could make the studies...
No, the next one is a meeting, it's on the 16th. So I'm just saying, the timeline of it is, this is a special meeting to do the consideration for approval. And if you don't do this now, then you wait until October 16 to do the approval. So I mean, it's up to you all. Just know...
I think we start fresh.
I, just know that October 16, you wait for then, and then you have elections, what, two, three weeks later, which will completely, could possibly derail everything anyway.
That's, that's a good point. You know, you do, it sounds like you have an election in November?
November 7.
Okay. So with the election, was, was the plan one of having the new council appoint the new manager?
Yeah, we have choice. That's, that's what will happen.
So do you think it might be better to wait? I mean, it's up to you.
Well, the problem is Pam is gone in December.
Yeah, I mean, it's what I was going to say. Yeah, so we're kind of in a, in a little bit of a pickle, yeah. Where we're gonna have two major positions open.
We might be better off getting an interim who has done the job before, rather than just choosing to choose out of these three.
So I think that what we can do is, I mean, my thoughts were, what was your thoughts?
I don't know. I mean, I kind of am leaning towards, you know, let's interview and see what we have. If we don't like it, we can open it up, and, you know, this way at least we'll lose some time.
Regardless of the fact that we don't like them, we have to open it up.
Right.
Right? I mean, we're gonna, we're gonna have to. There's no...
Yeah, if we don't like them.
Right, so I mean, that's, that's a, and granted, and we'll, and the city will have to eat that, that cost for it.
Yeah, it just seems like it's a waste of, a waste of time not to, at least interview. I mean, the other, the other possibility too is that if we, you know, let's, let's say candidate six is a, is a good candidate, and we like that candidate, but we wait, we could lose that candidate. And then we don't have any candidates that have significant city, city manager experience.
I think that's what happened last time.
And then the fact is that you still just have, I mean, my concern is that, how many people applied? Was it 10?
10, yeah.
And we got down to three?
Yeah, yeah. And before, you know, before you came in, I had mentioned that there's two things that doesn't work for you right now. One is the candidate pool, I think, is just really small and managers are not moving. One is the candidate pool, I think, is just really small, and managers are not moving. So they're much more selective about what, you know, where they wanna go. And the other part is just questions about the turnover.
Right, exactly.
So, you know, we can't say you're gonna get more candidates, or better candidates.
Exactly.
And we have an older posting.
So I'm thinking that we probably should just go ahead and, and interview the three. And then, I mean, you could still give us the information for...
I...
Joyce, if we start over...
So let me finish what I was saying. So we can interview the three, and then you can get, come back with, to let us know whether or not we have to start over, if, if we can start over, and then what that cost would be, maybe, for us?
Okay, yeah, I can do that.
Yeah, and I think, I think the, I don't think, I don't think, at least I don't think there's agreement here on whether or not we want to interview all three of them. I don't know if that's the case or not, but...
I know at one point you had talked about interviewing two of the three. And I, I do think two of the two, two of the three are stronger candidates.
Okay.
Yeah.
If we throw, if, if we start over right now, and say, these three are not acceptable, does our contract continue?
I can't say that it does. That's what I need to check.
Okay, that was, if we interviewed people and then, and then decided we didn't want them. I thought maybe that was two different situations.
No, but I, well, that's why I had said I'd go back and I'd check and find out what the next step would be, you know, whether, I'm, I'm thinking MML could continue, but they may have a fee to do that.
Right, but if we're not happy with the, with the three, if we say right now we don't want these three candidates, how, I mean, normally in a search, you just continue, right, or no?
Well, generally, if the candidates are qualified, and you decide you do not want to interview any of them, and they are qualified, that's different than not having qualified candidates. That's the, that's the difference.
Right, but it's questionable, in my mind, it's questionable whether that, this is qualified.
Yeah, actually, it's not, as far as those that are being suggested or recommended, you know, they do meet your requirements.
Right. They do. So, any other questions regarding this? I think that what the, the motion should be by, oh, I don't have my council here to tell me what the motion should be, but I'm gonna make it up as I go, is one, to interview the three. But regardless, if we don't like the three, that we're gonna open the search back up.
Yeah.
I think that that's the best... Okay. So somebody wanna make the motion?
I'll make a motion to interview the three candidates presented by the MML.
Is there a second?
Second, wait, did you, you didn't?
Oh.
Well, I mean, that doesn't matter, right? Because, I mean, if, if we...
I think you might wanna put, make the full motion.
Okay, and, and to continue the process, should we not be satisfied with the three candidates that we interviewed?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved to second, is there any further discussion?
I just have one little question. How unusual is it that somebody would interview and say they need the weekends off, or another job?
Well, candidates being honest.
True. But it, is that the first time it's ever come up, or have you...
It has for me.
Oh, okay, I'm just curious if that's something that's common.
We don't know that that's a deal breaker for, for that person. They just said that they prefer to...
Correct.
Continue to do that, so...
So, yeah, I can see that. Any other further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Jen, Caness?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
No, and I wanna state, because I don't think it...
It's just yes or no, go ahead.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor?
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next, we have public comment?
Oh, before you move on, just a couple of que, uh, questions. If you're gonna interview, can you perhaps give me a date?
Oh, absolutely, after we finish with this, we'll get some dates out here to make sure we set that up.
Or you can get back with me, either way, it's up to you.
And do we have a date when we're getting back with, when we can interview again if this doesn't work, or if we're being charged again? Is there, how quickly can...
She said within a couple of days, she'd have that information.
Okay, I missed part of the question.
It's, yeah, it's, how quickly, we'll know. If they, if this doesn't work out, if we would be charged, that's what she's asking.
She's gonna tell us in a couple of days.
Yes, I'm gonna get back with you.
But are you asking for the date of when we would get back together, if we don't like this? Okay, so we don't have that, I guess that'll be the second? We need to figure out the dates to interview, and then what Barb is saying is that to set a date for, just in case we don't like, I'm assuming what Barb was saying, excuse me, that if we don't like this particular, these candidates, this pool of candidates, what's gonna be the date for us to get back together?
Okay.
Look at the next set?
Well, that will have to be, go out for thirty days at least. And are we updating the advertisement for these candidates? Or are we gonna stick with the same one?
Yeah, you, you did update the brochure. However, as far as the, all of the photos were changed. Information that was current was included. The, the requirements for the position was based on the changes that you made with the requirements. So it was updated. We didn't use the same brochure.
The changes that you, I mean, so just to reiterate, the changes that you, that we sent you as a council, we sent you and updated the job description. So it's already been updated to reflect what the council was asking for in the first place.
That's correct, we updated everything.
And the pictures.
And the pictures.
Very negative.
Yeah, everything was changed, that, you know, the picture, you asked for changes with the pictures. We changed all of the photos, we upgraded the information regarding the requirements. We updated the information related to the city, because things had changed a little bit, so we made those type of updates.
Okay. Did that answer your question, Barb?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. We're all set then. We'll get some dates to, if we could possibly get dates for interviews before the end of the week, send out a doodle call, that would be great. Or if you wanna have us throw out some dates.
Well, if you guys look at your calendars now, throw out some dates, I mean...
Monday.
The ninth, we are off.
What about ten sixteen, study session?
It's a regular meeting, too. That's a regular meeting, too.
Well, and, and then with, you know, like, generally, we suggest two weeks out...
All right.
To give the candidates time to get organized because of their schedules.
Right.
So that would be like the seventeenth, eighteenth, somewhere around there.
So it'd have to be another one in the middle of the week?
Yep.
So I have the seventeenth is open, and...
Is it possible to look at a Saturday?
Planning commission.
Yeah, that week, I'm, I'm at the MML conference.
So we're into the week twenty, the twenty-third, so the twenty-third is open for me.
Which is a Monday?
Yeah. So it's twenty, the twenty-third, twenty-fourth, and twenty-sixth. Anyone have any issues with any of those dates?
Twenty-third, twenty-fourth works.
So I, I can't do the twenty-fourth.
Okay, so the twenty-third...
I can do the twenty-third, that's the only, I can't do the twenty-sixth.
I can't, I can't do the twenty-sixth either.
Can you do the twenty-third?
Yes, probably.
Can you do the twenty-third?
Twenty-third is good for me.
Karen, can you do the twenty-third?
Yeah.
And, so it's October twenty-third, good. And we'll have it start at...
What time do you think you'll be avail, available?
Are you talking about during the day, or the evening?
Evening.
Okay, 'cause I may have a problem on the twenty-third, and that's why I had asked about a Saturday.
Okay.
Yeah, mainly because my schedule's pretty well set.
Gotcha. Well, then that's going to be the twenty-eighth?
Oh, no, I can't do the twenty-eighth.
Can't do the twenty-eighth. What about the...
Well, the twenty-first would be...
I can't do the twenty-first.
I can't do the twenty-first.
No, I can't. Unless it's in the middle of the day. If it's more or less at two o'clock, I can do the twenty-first.
Okay, I could do the twenty-first at two o'clock.
You say you can't?
No.
Okay.
What would be the earliest on the twenty-third that you would, if you were to interview?
She can't do the twenty-first, right?
Says she might have a time conflict.
Yeah, you know, I could probably look at maybe two o'clock.
Two o'clock might not be that bad.
And the twenty-third?
On the twenty-third?
I won't be, I can't, I can't do that.
You can't do that?
No.
And everyone should be here for that.
Yeah, I have, yeah, I can't do that day.
Working twenty-fourth during the day.
Twenty-fourth?
Joyce wasn't available.
Oh, yeah, she...
Joyce.
I can't do the twenty-fourth. What about the twenty-seventh? That's on a Friday.
Twenty-seventh, I'm open.
I'm open.
I don't know about the twenty-seventh yet, I'd have to check at home. Like, at night?
Yeah.
Twenty-seventh at night?
Maybe you just, maybe start earlier, again, like, maybe two o'clock.
Yeah, I could do the twenty-seventh.
And maybe at two o'clock start?
I could do that.
Works for me.
Karen?
On the twenty-seventh?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
Like, about two o'clock?
Two o'clock.
I have to double-check, but...
Okay.
Okay, so we have four out of the...
Yes, you'd have a quorum.
Well...
I know, I'd wanna be here, but it'll be on, oh, no, we don't have Zoom anymore.
So let's tentatively look at for twenty-seventh. Barbara let us know about the twenty-seventh, otherwise, it looks like we're gonna be going into November, which, we might as well wait then.
So I can, I can touch base with Pam, maybe tomorrow?
Sure.
And see if that'll work? Okay, sure.
Well, she can email me if it works for her.
Okay.
Yeah, you can just email me, and then I'll...
But then if it, it might not work for the candidates.
Yeah, well, hopefully, it will.
Well, usually, if you're interviewing, you...
Yeah, you're pretty much the ball.
Probably when you wanna interview for a position, you find ways of doing it.
Thank you, Joyce, I appreciate it.
You're welcome, thank you.
Any public comments? I don't have anything, I haven't received anything. Mayor and council comments? I don't have anything. Anyone else?
I've got two quick things. I've received four calls this week from people who have said that either council people's or city staff people's voicemails are full. So if we could just all make sure on council, as well as, you know, the, the city staff, just to give them a note to clear out their voicemails.
I told you that the other day, it just jumped right to...
No, it was a different...
That was something different?
Yeah, that's something different.
Yeah. And then the other thing I just wanted to mention, it, it is election season. I've already heard one report of a sign being stolen. Doesn't matter whether you're for or against a candidate. If you're caught stealing signs, you know, the city will prosecute for, for trespassing and theft. And just to review the ordinance, you're allowed a maximum of twenty-four square feet of signage, with no sign being larger than six square feet, so...
Anything else?
That's all I got.
Anyone else have anything? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Adjourned.
Adjourned.